Board, it's 5:15 PM on Monday, February 24th. I call this meeting to order. Welcome and thank you for joining us both here and online. You can find our agenda and follow along on the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Share, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reese Gate?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preski?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Share. All board members of President Accountant for Dr. Fosnot, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Item 1C is the BPS mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states together, our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery. The BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You can also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Share.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Reese Gate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 3 is focus on success. 3A, driving economic growth, 2025 to 2030 career and technical education plan. Dr. Fosnot?
Yeah, board members, I'd like to present to you, I'm going to introduce Mr. Phillips and his team to kind of do our presentation. But remember, this was kind of a buildup into a redo of our strategic plan for 25 through 30. We really think that this you, the BPS family, our community, needs a long-term vision of where we're going with CTE. And you'll notice kind of the change in vocabulary we're using because CTE and some other programs are really driving economic growth for our community. I truly believe CTE is critical to help filling those job needs in our community, filling the vibrance of our community and seeing it, you know, through the next generation of students that leave BPS. So we're kind of coining those words that you might see in the upcoming strategic plan. But I'd like these people and Mr. Phillips to lead the discussion about the benefits of CTE and where we see it heading now and into the future. My recommendation here is you don't need to act on this tonight. It's not in the agenda any other place, but just keep it in mind as we continue to move forward with our planning for the future. So I would hand it off to Mr. Phillips. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you. President Reese Gate, members of the board. I'm Pat Phillips. I'm the CTE Director currently. So I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to talk about how career and technical education is essential to BPS's mission of empowering learners to thrive. I'm excited to share how we're preparing students for future success by connecting high-quality core academic experiences to students' passions and interests, and then providing them with real-world learning opportunities and career pathways. So in this presentation, we're going to outline how our CTE programs connect and support multiple elements of our strategic plan and what BPS is doing to enhance CTE to better meet the needs of our students and our community. We're going to show you why it's important for our community to support and grow CTE. We'll talk about how we plan to connect and support multiple aspects of our strategic plan to strengthen our community by strengthening our public schools. And we'll talk about what our next steps are to increase the number of career and choice-ready graduates who will drive economic growth and create a thriving Bismarck and North Dakota. So why is it important for you, as our community representatives and public school decision-makers, to invest in strengthening and expanding career exploration and engagement? Well, because we know from research, from data, and not least of all, from our own experiences, that increasing relevant, authentic, and career-focused experiences increases student engagement. And increased student engagement equals increased student success. Ultimately, and we say this all the time, but take a minute to consider it. Successful graduates equals successful communities. So let's talk about how CTE contributes to strong schools and communities. CTE supports learner engagement by focusing on personalization, which is who learners are, how they learn best, and what they aspire to be. CTE supports academic success through a range of authentic and relevant learning opportunities for all students. And CTE supports the career and choice readiness that creates thriving communities and economic growth. So as regards learner engagement, research tells us that our strategic focus on personalized and authentic learning not only increases student engagement, but it also pays longer-lasting dividends such as confidence and adaptability, reinforcing CTE's role as the bridge that helps between, that helps to transition between the worlds of work and the worlds of school. And we've experienced the truthfulness at BPS, as you've seen through many board reports and focuses on success, the positive impacts of efforts such as middle-school CTE summer camps, increased job shadow, capstone, and internship opportunities, and multiple value-added community projects that our CTE students have participated in. And local and state data shows us that our approach to responding to the post-COVID impact on a student engagement with a focus on authentic and personalized learning is leading the way in adapting to what meaningful learner engagement will look like in the future of North Dakota. So why is it important that we have increased, sorry, as you may already be aware, our Career Academy and Tech Center courses have seen an average annual increase of 11% for the last 15 years since we opened the doors of our current Career Academy facility. So why is it important that we have increasing CTE enrollment and opportunities for BPS students? Well, consider that CTE concentrators have a significant impact on graduation rates statewide for every demographic group. This again reinforces that this board's past and continued support of expanding CTE is a sound investment in the future of our economy. But not only are we dedicated to helping more learners earn their high school diplomas, we want those graduates to be prepared to grow and develop our communities and be part of our ever-changing economy. So based on the data in front of you, our continuous efforts in helping learners to make relevant connections to their workforce potential is a strength for our district to continue to grow on. So if the goal of our system is to produce thriving learners who become thriving citizens, then CTE supports this through increasing learner engagement by providing authentic and personalized learning experiences that focus on who learners are, how they learn best, and what they aspire to be. CTE supports academic success by not only providing the aforementioned authentic and relevant experiences, but by connecting our guaranteed and viable core curriculum in math, science, social studies, and literacy to both our learners' and our communities' goals and aspirations. And in that way, CTE is the bridge between the foundational knowledge of school and real-world economic opportunities. The sooner we engage our learners and families with this connection, the more our learners are ready to contribute positively to a growing economy. So we see that these opportunities to engage in personalized career-focused experiences have a positive impact on both our students and our system, right? But how do we build on our current success? Well, one thing that we hear from our industry partners, from research, and from our students is we need to extend the runway. In other words, we're seeking to create a K-12 systemic approach to engaging students with their career potential that starts with awareness activities at elementary and expands the time and space for our middle-school learners to explore their aptitudes and interests through hands-on experiences in multiple career pathways. This then, of course, allows students to better take advantage of more personalized and career-focused opportunities at the high school level. Research tells us that secondary students often experience a disconnect between the things that they learn and do in school and their longer-term career planning and aspirations. However, they tell us that they want more opportunities and chances to explore options in hands-on ways. And our own data tells us that middle school is a key opportunity to engage our students during a highly developmental stage in their lives. So for clarity, we're not proposing tracking our students by asking them to choose a career focus in middle school and follow that through the rest of their educational career. We aim to create multiple opportunities for students in middle school to better understand their aptitudes, which is who they are and how they learn best, and how they match with their future opportunities, which is what they aspire to be. And all of this within the confines of a regular school day and in a way that adds value to the work that our amazing middle-level educators already do. So as we move into the next phase of our district's strategic plan, we have a vision for all BPS learners to have access to experiences that are supportive of their aspirations. In high school, we have a vision that all BPS students graduate choice-ready. And that empowering each of our learners includes integrated career skill-building. And as you can see, in addition to an increasing CTE completer trend, we are on the right track with two-thirds of our students graduating choice-ready and the implementation of career-ready practices for all secondary learners. At elementary, it's our vision that all students continue to engage in career awareness through counseling lessons and that our guaranteed and viable curriculum has career awareness integrated into core subject units and lessons. And of course, we already have some of this going on in elementary with career opportunities for our youngest learners as well as connections embedded throughout our curriculum. We intend to continue to build on these connections to improve student awareness for this key middle level, where it's our vision that every middle-school learner participates in multiple career exploratory experiences in multiple career clusters and pathways. And this would be in addition to our already robust CTE elective offerings and in conjunction with our current careers course for eighth grader. So you can see that an immediate focus on middle-school exploration experiences is a great option for our district to extend the runway and address the growth opportunities that our current strategic plan has created and brought us to. And it fits perfectly into a K-12 progression from awareness to exploration to occupational intent. So Dr. Ravenberg now is going to talk more specifically about what that would look like and how it could add value to our system.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Good evening, President Reese Gate and the board. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you, and I get the pleasure of showing you what we are going to, what we have planned to bring to fruition, a strong K-12 CTE system that will serve all BPS students. So this middle-school programming offers an introduction to career pathways through half-day and full-day exploratory experiences that reinforce our career-ready practices that Mr. Phillips talked about. Students will receive multiple exploratory experiences throughout the year. Students will receive some required experiences and be allowed choice as they develop background knowledge in pathways. Some quick examples of these clusters. A sixth-grade health sciences student might, or a student taking health sciences might learn CPR in sixth grade, but in eighth grade, they might learn how to suture a wound. In the engineering cluster, sixth graders may learn how to program an electric car, and in the eighth grade, they may be programming and flying drones, which is super exciting. In order to help define the clusters and the pathways, we use our state CTE model and conducted a crosswalk with what is offered at the Career Academy to ensure tight alignment. As you can see, the clusters illustrate how we ensure that students get an appropriate range of experiences, and the pathways are multiple passes of student experiences. So now imagine for a moment that you're a middle-school student. You'll start your day at your designated middle school, starting out with home base, like you always do. You will then board a bus, kind of like a field trip-type experience, and travel to Hughes. You will then participate in two hands-on, engaging exploratory experiences, building off of the proof of concept from our summer CTE camps. At the end of the day, at the end of the second experience, you will board a bus and travel back to your home school to end your day. So as you can see, there is no impact to the beginning of the day or end-of-the-day logistics. Now let's zoom out and see what the year might look like for our own middle-school selves. Sixth and seventh-grade clusters are required to provide significant background knowledge in order for students to make more informed choices in eighth grade. Then in eighth grade, students will pass through each pathway during a three-month period. All students from each grade level will receive the same exploratory experiences. During the eighth-grade year, students will take a deeper dive into each cluster with full-day experiences making a pass through each pathway. These full-day experiences will inform their choices at the end of the year to choose their own adventures. At the end of the student's eighth-grade year, not only will the students have a wealth of background knowledge on all of the career clusters and pathways, but they will also be better equipped to make high school course choices. This will make the transition to the high school much more effective for all of our Imagine a learner who will eventually find a passion for engineering. As a sixth-grader, there will be an introduction to the career clusters. In sixth grade, students will engage in hands-on exploration of all six career fields, participating in interactive lessons, collaborative project, and industry-inspired challenges. The goal is exploration and awareness, helping students discover what excites them. For learner A, their interest in engineering begins when they take on a bridge-building challenge, using popsicle sticks and glue to construct a model and test its weight capacity. They find themselves fascinated by how small design tweaks can improve strength and efficiency. Later, during a unit on renewable energy, learner A will work as a team to build a small-scale wind turbine and measure its energy output, sparking curiosity about sustainability and mechanical systems. At the same time, a project in a business and marketing cluster catches their attention, where they develop a mock advertisement for a product they designed, showing an early interest in how design connects with consumer engagement. Seventh grade, personalized exploration. In seventh grade, students will still engage in all six career fields, but now choose pathways within those fields to explore more specific interests. Learner A, again, is, oh, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Learner A is drawn to design and technology, selects graphic design in the marketing pathway, using industry-standard software to design and create a product logo and packaging. Meanwhile, in the skilled and technical sciences pathway, they dive deeper into mechanical engineering, programming a robotic arm to sort objects by color and size. During a construction module, they help design a tiny house prototype, learning about structural integrity, sustainability, and cost estimation. These experiences reinforce their growing passion for both the technical and creative aspects of engineering. And finally, we have eighth grade, a deep dive into the career pathways. By eighth grade, the students will begin authentic, hands-on projects with their preferred pathways, applying skills in real-world simulations and team-based challenges. Again, learner A now knows their passion and lies in engineering and business. They take on structural engineering challenges, designing and testing, an earthquake-resistant building using CAD software and 3D printing. They also collaborate on business engineering project, developing and pitching a prototype for an eco-friendly transportation device, balancing both technical and feasibility and marketability. By the time learner A finishes eighth grade, they have gained valuable exposure, hands-on experiences, and confidence in their interests, allowing them to enter high school, ready to pursue advanced coursework in engineering, design, and entrepreneurship. All right. So imagine a learner will eventually discover a passion for arts and communication. As a sixth-grader, introduction to the career clusters. In sixth grade, learners are exposed to all six career fields through engaging projects and hands-on activities. Learner B enjoys many topics. Their interest is especially sparked when they participate in a digital storytelling project, where they create short videos and using images and music and narration to share a historical event. A podcast exercise, where they write and record mini-podcast episodes on a topic of their choice. A journalism challenge, where they conduct an interview with a teacher and write a short article. These experiences make learner B realize how much they love creative expression and Then we have our seventh-grade experience, personalized exploration. In seventh grade, learner B begins exploring specific pathways within each career field. They choose options that align with their own growing interest in media and communication, including broadcast journalism, where they learn to write scripts and deliver them on camera; graphic design and marketing, where they use industry-designed software to create a campaign poster; and theater and performance, where they participate in script-writing workshops and design stage sets for small production. During this year, learner B also produces short video documentaries about their school community, learning about video editing, storytelling structure, and audience engagement. And then finally, we have eighth grade, a deep dive into that career pathway. In eighth grade, learner B, now confident in their love of media and communication, chooses a number of things. A live news production project, where they work with a team to write, record, and broadcast a student news segment. A brand design challenge, where they create a logo, social media graphics, and advertising strategy for a fictional company. A creative writing and podcast collaboration, where they develop and record a fictional audio drama. By the end of middle school, learner B has built skills in storytelling, media production, digital communication, and visual design, setting them up for success in high school related to journalism, broadcasting, and graphic design. So let's look at high school and beyond. Let's imagine these two learners. Learner A, interested in engineering, can now focus on career intentionality and enroll in high school courses such as creative engineering, building systems, welding, architectural design. This course of study will create a marketable employee in the construction and engineering industry and help learner A become a highly sought-after post-secondary student in the engineering field of study. Learner B, interested in communication, can now focus on a career intentionality and enroll in high school courses such as computer hardware and IT essentials, graphic design, TV and camera production, and journalism. This course of study will create a marketable employee in the communications industry and/or help learner B become highly sought-after post-secondary student in the communications field of study. Students interested in these specific pathways might also enroll in business and marketing courses to further enhance their knowledge and skills in these industries. No matter which pathway a student chooses, they have the exciting and relevant opportunities to participate in capstones, job shadows, and internships that articulate into the post-secondary options or directly into the workforce. And now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Johnson. Thank you.
President Reese Gate, members of the board, appreciate it. So we know that part of this conversation began several years ago, circa 2020, and some other things were going on around that same time, you know, COVID and such like that. At that point, just want to show you, this is what our projected trajectory of our middle school enrollment was to be. And so at that point in time, I'll just click to the next one. You have to jump back a little bit, so find 2020-ish to get your bearing, realize if you see between the two, we've kind of changed our trajectory. In fact, we're less than where we believed that we were going to head. And part of that is that we also believe that we still can level up our game of what the middle-school experience can be in being able to support students, teachers, and that outcome. So again, part of that is that that has become less of an urgent issue as we look at our current enrollment projections. I looked at them again this morning, and Mr. Barnhart can attest, we're hovering around 1,000-plus students. We have one grade level in the elementary of about 1,150, but we keep kind of ebbing and flowing right in that range versus growing at a trajectory that we thought was going to be a lot more, a lot quicker. With that being said, economic forces can change that dramatically here in the future, so we'll see what happens with that. Keeping in mind that CTE has been a foundational aspect of our community, you know, 15-plus years ago, the school board that sat here had the vision with Dale Harof to be able to support and let's build a career academy on the BSC campus. From that point, Dale always said, hey, to be a true academy, we have to look at how are we offering personalized options for students to connect their core competencies? So Empowered Ed is an example underneath Pat Phillips and his work leadership, David Zane Peter and others now have come, where we've grown in Empowered Ed, not only at the Career Academy, but at one of our high schools and continue to expand that, but we also allow for students to come from our parochial schools and our home school and serve a wider region too, where students come to experience the CTE programs and classes, coursework, and they can matriculate through our system, as well as pursue opportunities for capstone experiences, internships. Being good stewards of our dollars, a few years ago, Dr. Ravenberg took a point on writing a $1.1 million grant, and Darren Share worked on that too, along with myself. And we then partnered with Sanford, and Sanford gave a generous donation, and together we saw what public-private partnerships can do. And I believe all of you have walked the halls here and seen what this Hughes First Floor looks like, and it looks like a clinic setting. And again, we are preparing our students in this setting. We are good stewards, and it's a great location, center of town, taking the great bones of Hughes Center and reusing a building and repurposing it. There still is more of that building that was intended to continue expanding options for sixth through eighth and ninth through 12 where appropriate. We also have our CTE expansion here at Silver Ranch, the Career Academy at Silver Ranch, where we're continuing to shift some of our building trades, construction, and our ag for next fall, but also expanding the offerings and opportunities to dive into areas that are economic growth, such as precision ag, looking at electrical, egg shack, plumbing, all needs in our community, all areas where we have driving economic growth and need of a workforce. And so I believe, again, if we can show and be responsive to our community needs, we give students that there is a future here and a possibility where their passions intersect at the spot where our economic growth is needed.
So I'd also like to take a minute to talk a little bit about the Central Region Area Career and Technical Center. This is a regional virtual CTE center that we're working collaboratively with to increase the number of hands-on and face-to-face CTE experiences for students in our region. And we know that these extended opportunities are available to students throughout the region, but also to our students in Bismarck. This expands their opportunity to have some of these career exploration experiences. We know that these students in rural schools that CRECTC serves might very well be part of a thriving Bismarck economy in the near future, and we also know that a thriving regional and state economy benefits us all. And so this continued collaboration represents the opportunity for us to both expand programs which are going to benefit Bismarck public schools and BPS students, as well as continue to grow our local and regional economy.
Thank you. To Pat's point, research has shown that approximately 70% of people settle within 75 miles of their hometown. It's not everyone. But when you consider that, when we're talking about, are you ready for that next step? What career do you want to go into? Location should be a consideration. What are the local economic factors that are driving? Where are the future opportunities? Where is the need of a workforce shortage and/or what skills can be generalized? And we happen to be in a wonderful state and a wonderful community that has a lot of economic possibility. Again, 15 years ago, plus, you had the vision to begin this work around a career academy as a community. as a community. When we talk about leveling up our Career 2.0, we believe that there's a local benefit in extending the exploration and opportunities into the middle school. That intersection, that sweet spot, finding out what one person's recipe is versus another, that's where we hook students so that they understand, I'm learning math to this end. Which sciences are best and most relevant to the pursuits that I have? Where do I see myself in my local community? What problems and challenges do I want to face it? What kind of work environment and schedule would I like? All these are intersected conversations that we want to be more intentional. Not that they aren't, but how can we be more systematic and intentional and engage in students with their parents and their family early on to see possibilities beyond that? Most students, if they don't have intentional exploration in their early middle school years, they tend to default to a career path that the parent, a close relative, a neighbor may pursue. We also believe that when we go forward, what the state has an opportunity to benefit. As we pilot, there's support right now for exploring how this career academy model that has now been replicated across the state at many locations regionally can be driven down into the middle school, as Pat referred to, kind of that on-ramp. Trying to get, there you go. We believe CTE for All has great power for our students and our community to drive this economic growth. We do stand on the shoulders of giants, the unofficial godfather Dale Harof of the CTE here in North Dakota, and you, the school board, BPS, that had the vision before any other board had a vision for what a career academy could be. We believe that through intentionality and driving alignment in our workforce can be prepared when we start with awareness in elementary, intentional exploration and clusters in the middle school, and then that occupational intent occurring by choice in CTE and non-CTE areas. To that point, if you want to pursue law and you think you want to be a lawyer, are you considering taking criminal justice? Are you taking AP Gov? We don't have necessarily the time nor the intent, but the intentionality is not just Career Academy CTE courses, but understanding how can I make use of my choices and which electives and/or courses within science or social studies are appropriate. It may be music, the fine arts, et cetera. We again believe in one goal, if it's CTE for All and preparing every learner to thrive, we can prepare that workforce at our three locations, BSC, Hughes, and Silver Ranch, through the six pathways, and that that support can be scaled to ensure that CTE for All helps ensure our mission and vision to empower every learner to thrive. At this point in time, we thank you for a little bit lengthy of a presentation, but know that there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. But at this point, we stand for any questions, as I'm sure there may be some things of myself or others.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Thanks to the whole team. Really appreciate, like you said, it's a robust presentation, but I can tell, you know, there's a lot of energy and work that's got into here. Board members, any questions or comments for our group of presenters here today? Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. Fantastic presentation in a week where it feels like public schools kind of took a beating. There are so many incredible things going on in Bismarck Public Schools. I'm so proud to be a part of this organization. I refuse to say the three Rs, but when we think about reading, writing, and arithmetic, RWA, those are great things. This is so far beyond, and it's so visionary to look at programming like this. And I would just point you to the four-year graduation rate. I mean, it's phenomenal. 83% statewide, CTE concentrators 97.88. It's 15% gap there that we filled. It's incredible. And then I look down to Native American students, 65% statewide, 95, a 30%. I mean, it's just incredible what this programming is doing, and I think the future is just incredibly bright. I think this is the future of education. I think we are on the forefront of that, and it's very, very exciting. And I certainly think these three can take a lot of credit for it. But they're right. Passports had the vision for this, and I think we've all supported it because we've seen how incredible it is. So thank you all for the work you do.
Ms. Peterson?
I just echo those sentiments. No, I really appreciate the three-pronged approach that you talked about with the, first, the why, and I think, you know, we all talk about the why a lot of the different times, but you really focused on the results that happened because of this work. I really, the how was, I know in different conversations when we've talked about expanding the CTE offerings especially, and I loved the extending the runway metaphor way to go with the aviation theme as it's one of your pathways. But tell me a little bit more about the vision in terms of utilizing that Hughes building when you talked about that block schedule and the three different middle schools kind of getting onto that bus and then exploring. I really, you know, Tabby, I really appreciated the vision for what they're going to be doing when they get there. Tell me, would all three schools, all three middle schools be intermingling? Are these separate occasions? Just tell me a little bit more about what the logistics that you're visualizing.
Yeah. Again, starting big picture, we can jump into a bunch of logistics. We chose to keep it a little bit higher. So ideally, we would like this to occur every month. You know, there may be a phase-in approach that necessitates us not being monthly, but it'd be quarterly every other month. But I'm going to just start from ideally build out, if it's every month, simple math, arithmetic, Mr. Lee, as you said, right? So we got three middle schools, there's three grade levels, two teams exist on each grade level at each school. So three times three is, times two is 18. So it would take us about 18 days where we could take the whole team, and that would be the intent. So take Inspire, Jaguars, Spartans, and be able to take them there for the day and be able to experience that. And then next month, they would come again, and we would repeat that. So there's some possibility in there, as there's some interest from perhaps some local school districts that might be part of the CRACT to join in. We could potentially look at partnership and allowing, you know, our private parochial schools to, if they are interested. Again, there's other opportunities to have others, but that would be kind of the cycle as once every 18 days-ish. I say ish because there's a little bit in between there. But that would be the intent. We also think that there's some things that we could do that could get into more details, but if that suffices for the answer.
May I continue, President Eastgate?
Yes, please.
No, that actually does help quite a bit. And then the other part of that question, because how will maybe those experiences at the center, wherever that ends up being or whatever location, how would they collaborate? Or how do you visualize that collaboration occurring with the teachers that are kind of back at the building? Maybe just talk just briefly about that again. I know the devil is in the details, but I know there's probably a lot of other teachers that are listening wondering, okay, what's this going to look like in terms of that relationship as well?
I'll start, and I'll let Dr. Reimberg and Pat Phillips weigh in too. So we've had some initial discussion, but again, we're not trying to put the cart before the horse. Let's just be clear. But some of that eventually in the full build-out would be what standards can be covered? Where is there opportunity? It's through no one's fault, but probability and statistics is an example is taught in every single year, and yet we rush through it. Where might we be able to take ownership of some of those? Is force, power and force a standard that's taken to be like, hey, we've got this one? Is there a speaking and listening standard? We've got this one. So again, when you're at a place for six hours plus a day, you know, and you focus on one or two standards or repeatedly, then there becomes a conversation of where can we be value-added and in partnership. Likewise, in the full build-out too, is there's a lot of work about recommitting with what the middle school vision and model was. And so that's part of the intent is, in a post-COVID era, when we lack people willing or able to sub as much as it used to, or just a workforce shortage, like everyone, we aren't having as much opportunities to do that deep collaboration to create those interdisciplinary experiential learning that are part of the middle school as well. So this could be a time that could be leveraged like we do at some of the other areas for like data or bring teachers together to collaborate, so that that could be occurring on those days back to school. There also could be opportunities, then I'll let some others talk about where that could be collaboration further.
Yeah, so I'll give you a concrete example. We have ordered a hydroponics lab, and it's all computerized and taking temperature, taking soil samples. All of that is computerized, and students will be able to utilize that information that's collected from the hydroponics lab back at their homeschool for math lessons, for science lessons, for things like that. So there are lots of opportunities to integrate the experiences that the students are going to have at this building back at their homeschools as well.
And Board Member Peterson, I'll just add one last thought. We know, especially at that middle school age level, but throughout a learner's educational experience, that personal reflection is a huge part of the learning experience, right? And so if we think about these kind of single-bite, field-trip-like experiences and how those integrate in with our advisory periods and our homeschool schedules, asking learners to reflect on what skills they've built, right? Our careers class uses tools such as are you ready ND? And so all of these experiences serve to feed a learner's background knowledge as they're asked to go through those reflective experiences more than one time or more than just in one semester of their middle school experience, which all creates that much more robust experience for them and potentially more readiness as they approach high school and beyond.
Thank you guys so much. That more than explained, or more than helped me understand what this could look like.
Board members, any other comments? Mr. Hager?
Thanks, President Eastgate. Thank you all for the presentation. That was, I enjoyed it. What I enjoyed the most was the vision, to kind of see the direction of where we're looking to go, very concretely spelled out. Sounds like there's more details there than we got there. So I appreciate all of that. Kind of to what Mr. Lee had said, you know, when you talk about Mr. Phillips' student engagement, and you see them picking the courses that they like, the things that they enjoy, and you see the results of that, and being able to extend that deeper into middle school and let them start exploring those things and seeing those things that they like. For me, it really gets me excited to kind of see those experiences. Then further personally, myself, as I do a kind of daily look at, you know, business development opportunities across the state. And when folks come to look to site industry in the state, they always have a checklist. And they go through that checklist to make certain sites work. One of them is always workforce. And it's trying to find workforce that has the skills to do what they need. And that's happening at the Career Academy. So your very first slide, we were talking about driving economic growth. I mean, that's exactly what you guys are doing there. So thank you for this. The vision is exciting. I'm excited to see where this goes. Thank you.
There wasn't a question there, but there's an opportunity. So to your point, and it was alluded to, is like kind of the field trip model. We have, Dr. Reimberg has led over the last few summers, what a middle school CTE experience could look like. We also, with Pat now and previous to that, Mr. Harof and Mr. Beeler had been doing like non-traditional STEM and CTE in different fields. So we have models of this. When people are like, what would this look like? Some of this is predicated upon that same idea. My daughter benefited, and was that, but that wasn't necessarily all students, right? So again, when we say CTE for All, we're not replacing your electives, we're not taking you out of music or fine arts. It's not a forced choice. If your student is an orchestra and a choir kid, band and orchestra, band and STEM, fax, you still can do that. And cherry on the top, icing on the cake, but yet an integral part of what we believe can happen for all. So thank you for that opportunity.
That's a good distinction. Mr. Hager?
Just a quick follow-up along those lines. When you're talking about CTE for All and the experiences that those kids have, you think, I think about myself. So I ended up with an accounting degree. But having had some experiences that I did back then in electronics and then dealing with, you know, different engineering aspects and having some background in what they're experiencing really helps you when you're sitting at a desk. It's not just a word on a sheet of paper. You know what they're talking about when you're putting dollars and cents to those things. So yeah, that CTE for All and having those disciplines cross each other, because they do in the real world, it's nice to see.
If you're an engineer, you want to know what you're asking people to weld.
Absolutely. Ms. Preskey?
Yeah, thank you as well for this presentation and a look into what that, what this vision really is. I think we've been talking about it a lot and hearing different things, but really good to see a presentation kind of pull it together. I'm just going to ask the two questions that I have, because I think they really intertwine with each other, and I don't know who exactly is the best person to answer it. But I guess I'm just curious as to the timeline for this to come together. I guess knowing the little bit that I know, I feel like we're, this is down the road a little bit, but I guess I'm just kind of curious of what kind of timeline we're working at to get to this. And then what challenges do we have with the instructors and teachers part of the equation to make sure that we have people to be providing the instruction in these classrooms?
Can I take timeline? Can I take challenge?
Sure.
All right. Ms. Preskey, board members, great question. I would tell you that we are already initially taking a light version of extending that runway for a middle school. As you heard, this is a very exhilarating opportunity for our community, right, and for our kids. And I would echo that I truly believe as a, maybe a dysregulated, not really focused middle schooler myself, it was those career and technical, when I got into what I could find, when I got into that right class, my ag class, and I could see, that's where I kind of want to go. And it's amazing how many ag topics that I learned there were about leadership, and they helped me decide that this is the direction I wanted to go, right? And then I became more focused. But timeline, to get to your first question, we're beginning that already on a light version, probably a little smaller than maybe what we anticipate to be for full rollout. It's going to take us a few years to get there, but you will probably see if we can, as Mr. Lee kind of said, not get beat up too much on the funding formula, and we can find some additional dollars to do that. You could see some of that on a light version at Hughes next year for some of our kids. And then we'll see how that rolls out. We're doing a very light touch on Hughes as far as not what you see with Sanford. I would say to our community, if you believe schools should be driving economic growth, we need some community partners. This needs to be a public-private partnership. We continue to court those partners, and we need to find some to help us really make this materialize. You already know on the far end, at the high school end, Silver Ranch is going up and is building out, but we have some work there to do to build that out as well. So I guess to your question, Ms. Preskey, probably you'll see some components, even a middle school runway next year, and that could be built out over a few phases. So challenges. And can you staff it, Mr. Phillips?
Thanks for that question, Board Member Preskey. I think we have a couple of things going for us with this model when we think about that challenge. I mean, finding high-quality teachers, especially BPS caliber teachers, right, we know is always a challenge, and we're always looking for the best people. A couple of things that are going in our favor with this model is, one, at the middle school, we don't have as many restrictions in terms of teacher licensure, right? So these, we're really looking here for the best teachers in terms of the people who can make relationships with students. They're going to see a wide range of students, right? The people who can make connections from core subjects to the CTE activities that students are doing, right? They don't have to be CTE-licensed, and they don't have to have any specific licensure. And so really, what that allows us to do is go out there and find the best middle school educators to put every single one of our middle school kids in front of.
And I'm sure that could also apply for people who are experts in that field or trade.
Absolutely. And those are the community partnerships that Dr. Johnson was mentioning, right? Like, I think a lot of these experiences are much more meaningful when they're connected with members of our community. Well said.
Thank you. Board members, any other questions, discussion on this? Before we move on the agenda, just want to again say thank you so much as you're here. I know you guys are in this a lot, and so as you're preparing these slides, but even in your day-to-day and just caring about what we're trying to do here at BPS and with the Career Academy and everything else in CTE and so on, you know, you're hearing some excitement and hopefully some thank-yous from here from the board, because it is exciting. And like has already been said, it's exciting for the board, it's exciting for BPS, and it's really exciting for our community. When I've had a chance to speak with this with people at both public settings on behalf of BPS as well as in private, you see those community partners, and they're out in the crowd or in those lunch meetings, and they're nodding their head, smiling about what we're doing with CTE here in Bismarck. And so I just wrote down even a couple of things. I remember sitting with a friend, I was sitting with Mr. Share at the Career Academy last year at a presentation, and friends from Acme and Bobcat and some of the great things they're doing. I had a client friend of mine that went right from Career Academy into welding and got hired at Bobcat right out of high school. Great job. And so I look at those opportunities. I'm excited. Thank you for sharing kind of those roadmaps, you'd probably call them pathways, of those different learning opportunities for students. And also, I love that there's also the throw-in, not a throw-in, but business and marketing. A lot of these folks, I always say, you know, I refer and work with a lot of different trades and contractors around this town, and there's people out there who have that skill set, and they also have that business. there's people out there who have that skill set and they also have that business minded right with it. And so you go from maybe having, I would say, you go from maybe having a van showing up to do some work to all of a sudden having six to growing into being another, you know, business owner right here in this community. So I think it's very exciting. Appreciate all the work and effort that's gone into it. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Thank you, President Eastgate. Moving on from focusing on success tonight, we're going to go to item four in our agenda, board members, public comment. The board recognizes the central role parents play in the education of their children and supports active parent involvement in the educational process. The board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command from your classroom teacher to the principal to the assistant superintendent and ultimately to Dr. Fosnot. For district wide issues, just reach out to Dr. Fosnot's office. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups are urged to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited to no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand and approach the podium if you'd like to speak tonight. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Item five in the agenda, monitoring district operations. I was going to go to Dr. Fosnot, but it looks like the first one is a public reading, I believe. GC nine, process for addressing board member violation. Board members, this will be the public reading and then we can make motions to retain and if we're in compliance or not. Here's the public reading. The board and each of its members are committed to faithful compliance with the provisions of the board's policies. The board recognizes that its failure to deal with deliberate or continuing violations of its policies risks the loss of confidence in the board's ability to govern effectively. Therefore, in the event of a member's mistaken, willful, and/or continuing violation of policy, the board ordinarily will address the issue by the following process. Number one, conversation in a private setting between the member considered to be in violation and the board president or other individual member. Number two, possible removal by the board from any leadership or committee positions to which the offending member has been appointed or elected. And number three, censure of the offending member of the board as a means of separating the board's focus and intent from those of the offending member. This brings the end of the reading process for addressing board member violations, GC nine. Board members, any comments, questions, or what would you recommend on GC nine? Ms. Preski?
I would move that we retain GC nine process for addressing board member violations.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Share.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And then board members to determine if we're in compliance, compliance with conception or with exception or out of compliance.
I'd move that we are in compliance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Share.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, board members. Item five B, OE twelve facilities. Dr. Fosnot?
And on this one, I will gladly hand it off to a BPS business manager, Mr. Share. Emphasize the Mr. He's closing in on doctor all the time. He's getting close.
Good evening, Mr. Share.
Good evening, President Eastgate, members of the board. Tonight, I'm happy to share with you our summary of compliance for OE twelve. So right after that, we are showing in compliance for all the indicators. I'm not going to read through each one of them, but I would like to take this opportunity while I'm in front of you to talk a little bit about last week. Last week, I think that we had, just like all of our employees, we had our team at FNT that really stepped up to the plate. From Monday, when most of us were at home thinking about what we're going to do for the the next day of school or enjoying the holiday or some of us had to work, that team FNT were making sure that our buses were going to go, addressing any issues, to fixing a water break in the vestibule at Legacy. We had a little bit of issue up there. Just really, really appreciate the whole team down there. To Friday, when my neighbor's water main was broke, so I was personally out of water for a while, which was not a big deal. But when our school was threatened to be without water, without water, we had to kind of kick into action. And the team said, okay, what we're going to do is we're going to hook up to a fire hydrant. We're going to run poly pipe and we're going to backfeed that water at Grimshood. Business as usual. That's the thing that we want to do for our kids, business as usual. And I just want to personally thank the team at FNT for just really stepping up. And, you know, it was it was kind of an incredible week, went from what we did negative to positive. But anyway, so yeah, and then I would just stand for any questions that you may have on on the report itself.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Thank you to the team as well. Please pass that along from the board for all their hard work during the cold days. Board members, any questions for Mr. Share? If none, how does the board find OE twelve facilities? Mr. Hager?
I would move that we find ourselves in compliance with OE twelve facilities.
We have a motion.
I would second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Share, the roll, please.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks again, Mr. Share. Item six is matters reserved for board action. We start off with six AR two point one, academic achievement literacy indicators. Dr. Fosnot?
Board members, Mr. Eastgate, this was a second reading for what we presented last time. I guess I'd field any questions if you have it. If not, my recommendation is to approve for second reading with the changes.
And I move to approve the second reading of the revised coherent governance results indicator, R two point one, academic achievement literacy as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on R two point one? Mr. Sheriff?
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item six B, we're looking at appointing BPS board lead negotiators. Excuse me. Board members, as you know, we're entering into negotiation year here coming up at the end of the spring and early summer. So we'll need to find the board negotiators for our work with BASA and BEA. The past practice of our board has been that the board president and the vice president have taken this role in the past. Do we have any discussion on the continuation of that practice for this year? Mr. Hager?
Thanks, President Eastgate. Just so that the board is aware, and I'm sure you guys all are, based on past practices, just note that my wife is a teacher within the district. So just wanted to make sure that 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 was out there publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Board members, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. And thank you, Board Member Hager. I think it's it's really tough in a community this size, a school district this size, to find anybody on the board that doesn't have relationships with people in school. I have a have a brother who teaches. Past board members have had sisters, wives, those types of things. You know, it's important for me to keep in mind, it's just it's just one employee. We're always looking at the the broad scope of things, the the system as a whole. I don't believe for one second that it hinders anybody's ability to do what's right by their stakeholders just because they are related to to someone in the district. So with that, I would move that the board appoint President Eastgate and Vice President Hager as the lead negotiators for the Bismarck Public School Board to negotiate with the BASA and BEA in 2025.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Share.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, board, and thank you, Vice President Hager, for being willing to enter into negotiations this year with us. Item C, the Bismarck Education Association petition for recognition. Board members, just pulling up my notes.
Those we received, sorry to interrupt.
Yep, no, please.
Those who received the petition from Mr. Augustin and his team earlier this week. So it was a little bit of a rush to get it on here. So yeah, your your motion's in your packet, but we do have them. And then after approval tonight would be the posting period.
Board members, any questions? Or any motions, if no questions?
I can take a step at it. The BPS school board, having previously accepted the description of an appropriate negotiating unit, has on file a dated petition of the Bismarck Education Association or BEA, which contends that it represents a majority of persons within the appropriate negotiating unit. This notice, which is posted in every school in the district, will serve to notify all of interest that the BPS board will meet on March 10, 2025, to consider the petition and to determine the validity of the claim.
Is that all you need? Is just a recommendation for this on this one?
I think I believe you need to act.
I know we had a motion, so, okay. So we have a motion?
Yeah.
Then we'd be looking for a second or further discussion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Share.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
We'll give a little feedback to school boards because that's right out of their handbook, but we could improve that maybe a little bit for them.
Thank you. Item six D, board member school visit updates. I do believe we have at least one, maybe two. So whoever wants to hit their button, Ms. Preski, you can go first.
Well, it really ties in well with our presentation that we got tonight with from the CTE Career Academy. So I visited there, I think it was probably in December, and kind of held off knowing that this presentation was coming. So I thought it would be really a good a good tie in and a fresh look. So as we saw, and some of my notes are probably going to be a little redundant to the presentation, but there are 2,000 students and you think about that in the volume of of kids that are coming in those doors, that's equal to what we have at one of our high schools. So, you know, it's really putting kids into different places and giving them different educational opportunities. And the numbers, as we saw, continue to grow. There's a strong interest and desire for these hands-on classes from our from from our students. And the courses range from, I wanted to say A to Z, but I couldn't find a Z course on the list, but W, welding, is pretty close. So, I mean, yeah, from automotive, aviation, digital art, electronics, architectural design, carpentry, welding, medical careers. It just really does give students the whole a whole wide range of classes to explore. And Mr. Phillips told me that they added a new class this year under the medical careers area, and it was for small animal pet care, and that has grown to be very popular. And I can see why. And really, it gives those students a really good look at, you know, an area of our medical careers. We talked as well a lot about the future of CTE as we were walking through the building and watching students work and popping into the classrooms. As we know, we broke ground in late 2024 on the Silver Ranch CTE. And and we talked about how that's really going to shift and expand classes. And I guess a way for me to wrap my head around it was a lot of the courses at the CTE at B or the Career Academy at BSC is more your basic courses. And and these other facilities are going to offer more higher level courses. So maybe the kind of level of electrical that you need to know how to do some odd end jobs at the house, it's going to be great, maybe to build your interest, but you're going to be able to do a lot more once we get those programs up and running at Silver Ranch. So I think those are really important. And then also just expanding into new areas and offering those higher level classes. Really talked a lot about providing greater opportunities for our middle schoolers to explore potential career paths and the importance of that, the vision for that Hughes facility. I still need to get there. And the medical career neighborhood that's already been developed and is a great start for us to for 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 BPS to 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 give a more, I guess, it looks and feels like a hospital. So I just think that that's so important. I think what we heard here was a lot about the vision. And I think Bismarck, I mean, we know that Bismarck has led the state in CTE. The vision that we have here in Bismarck is phenomenal. The students want it. The numbers are proving that. And it's really important, I believe, and I think one of one of our board members highlighted that too in question and answer, that it's very important that we have the community support and our partners involved in the CTE in the future to help us get these facilities across the finish line. Because we have, we have the space, we have the interest, and we just really have a lot of potential there. And now we need some more dollars and help bring things to fruition. So a lot of potential. I'm excited about it. And I think bottom line, as it was stated earlier, workforce is the issue. This is this is a great avenue to increase our workforce locally and in the state, and our businesses are going to benefit. So and and our students, because I do believe there's a lot of students that come through the CTE that either it helps them direct their focus to go to college or they are ready to enter the job workforce day one of graduating. So or even maybe before. So it was a great visit. I I really also, I didn't, I took a picture of it. I wish I would have done something to highlight it, but a Christmas tree in the entryway that they made at at the Career Academy, and it was really cool. And they had poinsettias sitting on the metal display, probably about 10 feet tall, that was in the lobby there. So it was a really cool visual to see when you walked in the door. Thank you.
Thanks a lot for that report, Ms. Preski. I believe one more tonight. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, President Eastgate. I was in the lion's den. It wasn't Daniel this year. It was John. I was in the lion's den at Sunrise Elementary. I came there in the early afternoon, but I totally get how that school was named. When you when you go up there, you can you can see for miles. And it's a great place to watch the sunrise. Really cool. I was greeted by Principal Dorheim, who was kind of pulling double duty at that moment, watching the front desk. I was a little early, so I just kind of waited around. But eventually, we were able to to go back to her office and visit on a number of different topics. And we we just had a great, great visit. And, you know, the thing that kept coming up, she just she just couldn't say enough about her staff, how her staff is incredible. They do what needs to be done. They cover for each other. They're focused on the kids and often sacrifice their own prep time or even lunchtime to to help each other out. You can just tell how passionate she was about her staff and and how much she appreciated them, which is which is really cool. Sunrise this year, you know, we don't always know this. We we see it, I guess, on paper, but Sunrise felt the loss of a section this year for sure. You know, Mr. Barnhart does such a great job of balancing our directives on on class size and maximizing resources. And I think every year, there's a school that adds a section and and one that gets one dropped. And these these are just some of those tough decisions that that need to be made every year. But it's not lost on me that when a building loses a section, it can create some challenges, especially when they they open the doors and they're kind of scrambling to come up with a plan. Probably one of the things that I didn't realize at the time, and I talked with Principal Dorheim about, and I actually did a follow up with Mr. Barnhart, but Sunrise is one of four elementary schools that has a resource room. And Mr. Barnhart pointed out that we have them at Northridge, Solheim, and Centennial, which means when needs arise in buildings that aren't equipped with resource rooms, those kids are sent to one of these four schools and and those rooms fill up. And they can they can fill up rather quick. And we all know it's it's not easy serving kids that that are having behavioral needs, especially when those needs vary so greatly. So we talked a lot about how that's going this year. And certainly, there are challenges. And Principal Dorheim says her staff, again, risen above and beyond the call of duty. That work can be really, really time consuming. And that work can also result in stretching our resources as a district, but also the resources of a building. There's just no getting around that. And there are no quick fixes. But it was good to understand the impact that it has on a building and to see our people persevere. And they and they do every day in all of her buildings. You know, a lot of times, I think that's been, you know, kind of the the motto of this year, perseverance, because it's been, there's been year, perseverance, because it's been, there's been some challenges. There's been some challenges. We also talked about how some kids are diagnosed, and I thought this was really interesting, how some kids are diagnosed by their pediatricians and are told they will have an aide with them when they get to school, yet we don't hear that or realize the needs of the child until they show up in our system. So we just started talking about, wouldn't it be great? You know, and this is something to kind of stick a pin in, Board Members, but wouldn't it be great to communicate with our medical providers and just come up with just a simple system like, hey, give us a heads-up if you have a child, or give us a name, and so we can kind of track them when they're coming into our system. But this kind of goes along with that discussion we've had for a long time about prescreening and how do we get better, you know, when kids come into our system. I think it's getting more and more challenging. And it just kind of mirrors what's going on in society and what we see going on with kids. There are more and more needs. Every year, there get to be more, you know, and we want to try to avoid that breaking point, if you will, and try to stay ahead of the curve. So I just thought it was interesting as we talked through that, and it would be cool to, you know, to come up with another solution there with medical providers. We can screen kids at BSEP, and we do, but you think about it, we don't, not every kid goes through BSEP, actually, most don't. A lot of, we have a lot of transitory kids that enter our system. I mean, there's just a lot that goes into understanding those kids the first week of school when they're in kindergarten. And if you think about it, I mean, kindergarten, we're all relatively the same age. Some are much older than the rest of you. But really, it wasn't, you know, it was so different when we were in school. Kindergarten now is like first grade. I mean, they hit the ground running. And so they have to have basic expectations that they can meet, that they can fall in line, that they can learn to be quiet, that they can move around. And by and large, most of our kids do, but we do get caught off guard with some kids that don't, and it creates issues, right? So we started talking about things like, you know, what would it look like if we had a kindergarten boot camp before kids get to school? And these are kind of 30,000 square foot ideas, but just any way we can kind of learn more about the kids that are coming into our system, I think it makes us stronger on day one. So great, great conversations surrounding all of that. It's clear to me, you know, we did a walk through the building, of course. They just have great, great kids. I mean, we always, every building we're in, we say the same thing. They are, they're great kids. We have great kids in this district. And the staff there is really passionate. And I really got to see that firsthand about how they're passionate about meeting every child's needs. It was pretty cool. There's that elementary energy, right? When you're going through an elementary building, everybody's busy, ton of excitement about learning, there's always something happening, good or bad. There's always something happening. And whenever I leave an elementary school, I'm just, I'm absolutely exhausted. And that's after an hour. That's after one hour. I know I'm old, but come on. That's pretty bad. Yeah, it was, but it's exciting. It's so, it keeps you young being around those kids. But it's, you know, we have such great people that work with our kids every day. We just really do. As we wrapped up our visit, I asked, what makes Sunrise a special place? And Principal Dorheim didn't hesitate. She just said, in one word, teamwork. She feels blessed to have people that pitch in to get the work done every day. They elevate each other. I think they took that from a well-known superintendent. And have an Elevate Board in their lounge where staff can note the good work that they see during the day, and they have a weekly newsletter that highlights that work and gives staff a shout-out for the good work. They want everyone, I just thought this was cool, they want everyone in the building to know you matter. And that's the truth. Everybody in those buildings matters. So, yeah, it was a great visit.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We're all glad that you made it out of the Lions Den. You lived the tale of the tell, even after that exhausting hour. So thanks to you and Ms. Preski both for your reports tonight. We appreciate that, and for the educators that welcome us into their buildings. Board Members, moving on in the agenda, we're at item seven, the Consent Agenda. What are the wishes of the Board?
I move that we approve the Consent Agenda.
I can second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Share.
Preski?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. And last item on the agenda, last but certainly not least, number eight, the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Fosnot?
I don't have much to add this week. We're kind of legislatively, I thought I could add it, but we're really crashing towards the mid-break, and we're going to be able to, not a lot of bills in committee, it's more of just getting their work done before they head to their break. So I think the only thing we have tonight was a financial report for Mr. Share.
Welcome back, Mr. Share.
Thank you, President Eastgate, members of the Board. Tonight in front of you, we have the financial report. Couple things I wanted to update the Board on is, we still are lagging in our revenues. Did a little more digging, and we are waiting for our money from the county that's passed through from the state on that, all the tax credits. Hopefully, a lot of us enjoyed. So that, we're trailing by about $4 million, which is throwing our projections off to the tune of $8 million. But I hope by next month, we'll have that kind of corrected, so that'll even out. And then on our expenditure side, we still are tracking under expenditure at about $1.7 million. We do have a few line items that have gone over on both revenue and expenditure. The good news on the revenue, we like when they go over. That's just revenue that we're collecting. On the expenditure side, I would say to counter that is, when we look at everything combined, we're still tracking well under in that particular, whether it's whatever that object grouping is, utilities or purchase property, all that. And when I say purchase property, we didn't buy any property. That's things like carpet and all that. So I would stand for any questions the Board would have on the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Board Members, any questions for Mr. Share on the financial report? Okay, I see no lights coming on. Mr. Share, thanks again. Board Members, with that, we have exhausted the entirety of our agenda for tonight. I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, and have a great week.